And that's the alternative that it's what we've recommended and the other alternatives. And it would be the, you know, the best solution for this one. They're looking at anaerobic digester covers to reduce any odor issues associated with the anaerobic, I'm sorry, with the aerobic digesters. I apologize, I said anaerobic. Looking at some scating electrical upgrades for the entire system to more automate it and have more control capabilities. And then upgrading the generator and then the site work and piping required for these other improvements. So those capital costs come up to 9,870,000. If we look back on alternative four, where that one for this capital cost to get the nutrient removals in the future, we're up at 19,181,000. And the biggest difference are the tertiary filters and UV disinfection and a few of the other components and the new operations building and controls were proposed at that time for that alternative. So the engineering costs estimated similar numbers for the facility plan permitting and funding, design at 7%, which is what the state revolving fund, SRF program recommends and allows for the design cost on this project and same for the construction services. And then on the O and M cost, item C, there's a few, fewer unit processes, so the electrical and chemical use are much lower over the 20-year life for that alternative.
Let me start. If we go with option five, under C, operation and maintenance, is there a cost savings, I presume, less electric, less maintenance, less chemicals, any? Has that comparison been done? I see.
Yes, that, the-
Can you quantify that for me? Do you know what our current spending?
These are close to what your current spendings are, are going forward. There'll be some, there is some efficiency on variable frequency drives used for number of the pumps that are fixed speed to get some electrical efficiencies. Those have not been evaluated in detail in this analysis. These are more reflective of your current cost projected forward.
The big savings would be, I take it, equipment replacement. Do you know what we're spending now maintaining the old structure, the old plant?
No, I do not know that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Alderman Lewitton.
Mr. Cognan, let's review the components. Component three is an ongoing cost. Am I correct? It's not an upfront cost.
Component three, the air ration tank addition?
No, the section you have here at the bottom, you call it-
Section C.
-operation and maintenance cost.
Correct. That is, the note on there, that's for a 20-year planning period, that's a net present value of the operations and maintenance cost.
So we should bring that to voters' attention, that that is not an upfront cost, that that is actually an operations cost that would be built into the normal cost of the water bill that would be developed every year on, on the, on the, on the fund, on the, on the fund to develop a so-called profit on the operation of it. So you have a fund that will accrue to pay for modernization when the time for modernization comes. So therefore, when we look at the cost of upgrading or changing, we should look at components one and two, because those are the, that's real money. The rest of it is guesstimated money for the future and is operational cost.
That is correct.
So considering the cost of all these items, we should disallow, see in our decision-making, it should just be a footnote of what it's going to cost to operate the, the equipment year by year. And then you have it in, unadjusted for inflation, so it becomes even less of a, of a pertinent issue as we make a decision now.
That is correct. I would add, it was included on here mainly because of the evaluations of alternatives one and two and three.
I'm not, I'm not faulting you for putting it in. I think it's good that you show it.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, and I'm making it notation of it for informational purposes, for, for the viewing public and for the voters, that that is not part of an expenditure that would be realized in the capital, in the capital budget. It would be in the, in the maintenance budget. And it's not, for now, it's for every year, and it's not one 10th or one 20th per year, but it's a geometrical or algebraic equivalent, which will change as the value of the dollar changes.
Yeah.
So that's what I wanted to bring up on, on that, rather than as a question, but as a clarifier. What I would bring up as an opinion is I think that, that the fifth alternative should be wiped off the books. I don't think that it's a good alternative, because as they say, the next generation's going to fault this generation for, for just getting by and not modernizing with, with what is going to be needed in 2020 or 2030. It's the phosphorus and the, and the phosphorus limitations and the nitrogen limitations and whatever else they're going to come up with, it's going to come online. We're going to have to meet it. So basically, if you do five somewhere down the line in 2015 or 2018, you're going to have to go back and you're going to have to do one, one through three, and you're going to have to do it at the inflated prices of 2018. So it's better just to forget about that, in my opinion, and go ahead with building for the future instead of modifying the present. Thank you.
Alderman, please.
You mentioned the design engineering, the fees you're allowed by the state. I know we filled out some paperwork for grant money. Is that for the fees for the engineering? Is that, is there grant money to do the engineering work on this?
The, what was filled out and submitted was a state revolving fund loan pre-application. And the deadline for submitting, it was March 31st, and it went in well in advance of that. And that covered the total project costs, including construction cost, item A, and also all engineering and permitting and administrative cost, reflecting item B, would be included in that.
The reason I'm asking is, you know, just listening for what you guys are telling us about the life expectancy of the equipment, my thing is, if we engineered with the, with the improvements of the phosphorus and the nitrogen removal, it doesn't mean that we have to, if we engineer it, does it mean that we have to put those in right away? Or could we just start with the remodeling of the plant after the engineering is done? The engineering then is ready, like Alderman Lewitton says, because, you know, we're going to face some decisions coming up with money here, coming up in about, soon as we're done with this. The bottom line is, if we get the engineering out of the way, can that be done? And then you only do, you do, I understand if we do the project in phases, naturally it could cost us a little more in the long run, but it's going to come down to a dollars and cents thing. Is that, is that something that can be done or no? If you do the, the $19 million plan, once we engineer it, we have to build it? I'm, you know, I'm not sure.
Yes, the, there are separate unit processes to achieve the treatment efficiencies that we need. So those can be designed and then not constructed as part of the plant if, for some reason, they weren't needed at that time. Or they could be phased in into the future. And the best way to do that is to design for them first, so that the constructability issues can be taken into account, so that they can actually be built in the future at a later time if need be.
See, my thing is, I mean, if we do all the engineering, I don't know what's going to happen. You know, there are all this jobs bills that are going on and this and that. We get done with our engineering program and with the engineering and all of a sudden, federal government decides, you know, they want to put money out there. There might be a ton of money, who knows? We might get more than we thought and might be able to do the whole project less than number five. But if we're not ready, we can't do it. My question is, I think we, you know, that's what I'm, right?
There are a number of communities that have requested engineering plans to be developed and then basically sit on the shelf until they're ready to pull the trigger and construct facilities. As far as alternative four versus five, you'd want to build a lot of the infrastructure that you would need in the future and then just populate the buildings with the equipment as you need them. And that would probably be the, the most cost-effective approach to address the nutrient removal. For example, the gravity belt thickener building would have a room for chemical storage tanks for phosphorus removal. You'd want to build that building with the room for those tanks, but maybe you wouldn't add the tanks right away and wouldn't add the pumps right away. But as that regulation was promulgated, then you'd have the space already allocated and you'd add the tanks and the pumps. And that, that would be the, the approach I think we would take. And that's generally a more cost-effective approach to accommodating a, a future regulation.
If I understand, Alderman, please correct and correct me if I'm wrong. He's talking about a hybrid, like a 4.5 plan, that you would use the engineering services of four, the 1.3 million, but do the project of five. Is that feasible?
Yes, that's feasible. In fact, you could even include some of the items as alternates when it was going out for bid to get actual hard costs from the contractors bidding the projects and basically bid four and possibly pull back to five. For the most part, you could do that, but with what we've got here.
Another question, then I'll yield the floor. Assuming we go with five, how long are we talking about the permitting, the engineering and construction? Is this a multi-year, one year? What are we talking about?
One good thing about number four and five, you would not have to modify your NPDS permit if you're not asking for any increase in capacity. So you would have to update your FPA, your facility plan. So that shortens the, the time period for implementing it. You could start right into the design work and then the permit you get from IP is your construction permit to implement those changes. And the design time on this one would probably be on the order of nine to 12 months.
And then construction?
Construction on that would probably be due to site constraints on the order of 20 to 24 months.
So we're talking about a three, over three budget years, basically?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Let me ask you this question. If there's no, in, in design plan five, they're proposing, there's no expansion in case we add hotels up on Thorndale and all that other stuff. Mayor, I know you're going to come back with a question on that, because it ain't at the capacity now. So I will answer that question for you. But the point is, Brad Kilderson was here and says, it was in the winter months that the flow is always down. The summer months, the flow goes up. My point of view here with this proposed five, if you go ahead and start putting hotels up on Thorndale Corridor, and we heard from our city manager tonight that it may be a expressway, it may not, that someone's going to take the ball and run with that eventually. My concern here, if you go ahead and spend $13 million on this, gives us no options and we'll be back to the drawing board in four years or five years when Thorndale is built out and we'll be taking all these parts out and putting new stuff up or expanding the treatment plant. Mayor, I know where you, how you feel about this, but I cannot support this option five unless you kill the Thorndale Corridor completely. And I don't think this council is ready to kill Thorndale Corridor. We heard from our, our plant maintenance guy, he says, yes, the flows are always down in the winter months, but they go up during the summer. Again, we aren't at the capacity. But I feel, could you, do you have any idea what, if we decide to put hotels up, all the way up in Thorndale Road there, one hotel, okay, will the treatment plant be able to take the flow?
I'd like to discuss the capacity issue a little bit between your north plant and south plant. Right now, when you look at your total combined capacity, there's some excess. Unfortunately, that excess under our current permit is at south plant. North plant is operating pretty close to capacity. So any expansion in the service area for the north plant, Thorndale Corridor is one of those areas, would result in more flows than the north plant can really handle. So that's one of the things, at, at the last meeting, there was a discussion of the excess capacity you have. You've got enough room for 10,000 people. Well, that is, if they were to move to the area that's serviced by the south plant, and then you've got to deal with, okay, you're staying above your 1-MGD, south plant has to be a major discharger, then you're looking at upgrading a, a plant that will, you know, basically be building an entirely new one. So back to your capacity issue, north plant's got limited available excess capacity. And, you know, depending upon the PE coming in from that hotel, you know, the amount of flows coming from it, you know, it, it could push it above, you know, the critical review status, you know, with, with one hotel being added to your, your current flows.
So with that being said, Mayor, then if, if you guys choose to go with project number five, I will obtain a motion that would kill the Thorndale Corridor project then.
Want to clarify this, because this issue keeps keeping up. So if I'm saying something wrong, correct me. At 1.97 MGD, that's the equivalent of a town of 19,700 people, excluding the south plant in its entirety. The north plant in and of itself can support a town of 19,700. Is that correct?
That's correct. If you have limited infiltration coming in.
Which is another way of solving the problem. If we eliminate the infiltration, you can pick up extra people that way, or we'll decrease, increase the capacity, decrease the flow by solving that problem.
That's, and reducing infiltration is a difficult task, but it is a way to increase your plant capacity by reducing your groundwater that you're treating every day. Yes.
I think Alderman Shockey was next, then Alderman Cadella.
That's, that's what I was going to ask. I have two questions. First one is, is it 19,000 if we decrease to a reasonable amount of infiltration?
Well, that's-
Keep hearing different numbers, 14, 19. What is, what are we really looking at?
Dave, do you, what are the current flows coming into north plant? Do you have that? Lee? We've got the information reports. I don't want to estimate.
Okay. While he's looking at that, then the other question I have is, you mean for the construction costs of $9,870,000, we're not going to increase the ability to take care of phosphorus and nitrogen at all?
That is correct.
Whoa. What are we paying almost $10 million for then?
Keeping a 20, 25-year-old plant running.
Alderman, please began to touch on something and Mayor Johnson called it a hybrid concept. Does that hybrid concept work with, let's say, design concept number, I guess it's, I guess it's two, that, that gives us new, that meets any new design standards as far as, you know, the, our output levels as well as gives us growth? Can two be combined with five? Can you, can you design the plant that I truly believe the city needs, but if we don't need it when the design and permitting is done, can we build the main infrastructure and then just the key components to keep us operating at status quo?
Yes, that's the process that Mark was describing earlier, and that's how it's frequently done, is design for what we anticipate coming in, build it when it's the most effective time to build it, you know, as far as an enclosure or to put some pipe in so you don't have to come back and, you know, demolish the structure just to run in a, a pipe. So if you design for that and then, you know, just the unit processes that you don't need at this time, you know.
I thought that's what I heard. I just wanted everyone in the room to hear that specifically the second design concept is, that can work with that one as well. So, thank you.
We'll call that one 2.5. Alderman, Alderman, please.
Actually, that's where I was going, is basically design, when I, maybe I didn't make myself clear enough, with the expansion, but you don't have to expand the capacity. I mean, I'm going off of what Alderman Lewitton said. We have to think of the future.
Mm-hmm.
Because, you know, let's face it, 10, 15 years down the road, you know, we don't know where it's, where we're going to be at. But the bottom line is designing the plant, but only updating, doing the first phase. And I understand, you know, right now, we're looking at a cost of 26 million for the cost on, on the first alternative, let's say, and we go to the 9 million, it's, you know, we're talking, that's 16, 17 million dollar difference. I understand if you do it in pieces, I think we talked about this, it could end up costing you more money.
Mm-hmm.
But the bottom line is, you know, the mayor has a point that right now, we're not, we're not using those flows. And who knows what this INI studies that we're doing is going to bring up. My thing is, if we're getting some grant money to do the engineering, which we've applied for.
We haven't got it yet.
Do the, right. I know, I understand we don't have it yet, but do the engineering and take it in phases.
One thing, about the only thing that you may see some cost expenditures for, you know, your first phase that would, you know, you won't be able to recover those, one unit processes would be the, the raw water pump station. The new design has a new raw water pump station that when your flows need, are going to increase, that is the time to build those. Your current raw water pump station needs some work now, so you'd have to have some dollars expended on that upfront. And then when your excess, or when your additional capacity is needed, then you would spend the money on the new one. But those dollars that you had spent, we're estimating roughly at $250,000 for that, that's money that you would be spending now, you're not going to get a long-term use out of. That's the only drawback to doing it that way. But from a cash flow management, if you don't have the dollars and you don't need to spend those dollars now, just spend what you have to to keep it running.
Alderman, please.
Yeah, but these pumps that you say, let's say we do the engineering with the expansion, we do the pumps, those pumps may be working for 10 years before we have, actually have to do the expansion.
Yeah, five years, 20 years, depending upon when the expansion's needed.
Alderman, will you?
Thank you. So when I looked at four and five, I, I did a side-by-side here. And if we go with the concept of planning for the future and, and starting with plan four and doing the engineering, you know, with the idea of expansion in mind, I looked at three areas, and I just want to make sure my thought process is correct. So first area being 17 and 18 on alternative four. And that's where we would do the engineering with four in mind, but we could modify, you know, with alternative five, correct? Okay, but, but secondly, so item number one, operations building expansion, wouldn't that be our next step to do the expansion? So we would have to do the 1.5 solution versus 150, right out of the gate, right?
You wouldn't have to do that right out of the gate. That's something, and that's one place where construction could occur later and not really affect the construction of the other parts of the plant, is looking at the operations building. So that is something that could be put off till later, yes.
Okay. And as a follow-up, item number seven on alternative four, would that have to happen right away or would that come later?
That's one of the main differences, that can come later.
Okay.
That's in there to get your higher removal efficiencies for a lot of the phosphorus and nitrogen removal. That's a big part of that. It could go in there now. Really, number eight, the UV disinfection.
Mm-hmm.
If that's put in now, the tertiary filter also gives us improved performance for the UV filtration, allows us to UV, to use UV disinfection as opposed to the chlorine gas disinfection that's used now. Now, alternative five doesn't include UV filters or the, or UV disinfection or tertiary filters. It's still using the chlorine gas disinfection system.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman, please.
You just mentioned the chlorine. Didn't you say the last time that they were trying to get away from that use of the chlorine or something, there was a, you know, EPA or something, we were trying, they were trying to get away with that, away from that or something?
Yes. Chlorine gas, it's probably the least expensive disinfection alternative, but it's also the one that is the most hazardous to the, you know, really people in the area. And so because of that, there are more restrictions on the use of it and the sizing of it and also coming up in 2011, the emergency response capabilities of the first responders, if there's a chlorine gas leak, that level of training has to be much higher than it currently is. So either local fire rescue group would have to qualify for that or plant personnel would.
So if we went to the UV?
That eliminates that concern.
All right.
However, if I read this correctly, is that 10 times more expensive?
The UV disinfection?
I noticed the chemical use goes up by a factor of 10.
No, the, the chemical use is for your phosphorus removal is your main-
All right.
...increase in chemical usage. Actually, the UV disinfection, there is no chemical use with it, but chlorine gas is a relatively inexpensive chemical to purchase now. That's why it's so commonly used.
Alderman Cadella.
Just a quick point of clarification, just want to make sure, alternative four includes no increase in capacity.
That is correct.
Thank you.
That's keeping the capacity at north plant at 1.97.
Alderman Coles.
I was on the first committee and they talked about five, five MGD, five capacity for this, the city. In case we have anything that's growing, we'd have to have that much in 30 years from now. But we're planning this plant for repair or build another plant. Are you figuring that you're going to have, you can't have the capacity of five, no matter what you do on the north plant? The south plant can't be expanded because it's on forest preserve property. So what's your alternative to that?
The, the current design that we have brings the capacity, total capacity up to three point, or 4.45.
3.5?
At north plant and one MGD at south. So we're at roughly four and a half MGD. When the population studies were done in the early part of this, based on the planning report for the Thorndale Corridor, also looking at CMAP population projections, that capacity actually gives you 20 to 25% extra over what's planned at that time. So there is a lot of extra capacity built into that number based on the, the planning information that's available.
All right, okay. That's all I want to know.
Yeah. Alderman Lewitton.
Okay. This question is either for the mayor or for Ed or Steve or, or Mike, whoever wants to answer it or can get a composite answer. Statement, Wooddale is a net importer of people during the daytime. When people talk about reaching a capacity for 19,000 people, are we talking a daytime population or are we talking a nighttime population?
I'll defer to the experts.
We've got the, the tables here that go over the population projections. I don't know if we want to try to put these, the spam-
What Alderman Lewitton is referring to, which you may not be aware of, due to our industrial park, our daytime population surges by a factor of two or three.
What we utilize for our current population- What we utilize for our current population for residential is 13,509 people. The employment is at 26,356 people. That's the population with your employment. What we're looking at for the projected population at 2030 is a, you know, an actual full-time residential population of 13,869. So very little increase in residential units within the city. Our employment increasing up from 26,000 up to 29,000. So there'd be an increase in the employment. We're looking at 360 increase of residential and then a 2,900 population increase for your employment levels. And that's what was used for developing our design flows.
Then what I'm hearing, the answer is that, that, that you have calculated the daytime and the nighttime population, one at 13,000 and one at 23,000. So when you say we need a capacity flow of 19, are you referring to the daytime or the nighttime?
It's the-
The way that the flows were projected is a combination of the two, really. You take the population projection that you have for residents, and you have a certain value associated with that for flow. Then you have the, the numbers that you have for your employment, and you have flows associated with those as well. And those flows are quite a bit different. You have maybe 100 gallons per person per day for residential, and you may assign 15 gallons per person per day for employment. So when you look at a population equivalent for the entire community, the employment population is drastically reduced on an equivalent basis, if that helps.
Okay. So you'd have X for the, if X equals the nighttime population, and Y equals the daytime population, then you'd have Y minus X multiplied by .15 equals your average population. So what's that calculation? And is that, is that calculation taking into consideration industrial use of water? And does that come, does that document in your mind and your mathematical equation a need for more MPG's, gallons per day, million gallons per day?
Right. I think I understand the question. And I'd like to start off by saying that projecting populations, five years in the future, 10, 20, 30, is very difficult. And so we rely on the experts in the area like CMAP to project those numbers for us. And so what we did is we, we used the 20-year projection from CMAP for employment for, for your population. And we assigned 100 gallons per capita per day for the residential, for the population of that town. And we assigned 30 gallons per capita per day for the employment, which we expected to be conservative. Like, like I was saying previously, you know, a person at work during a normal day might use 15 gallons. So there's, there's a little bit of fluff there for commercial, industrial. But we don't actually know those values aside from going and metering every, every commercial entity and industrial entity. It's, it's very difficult to discern exactly who contributes what. So the two ways that we have is we have, we can use the data that's published to project future demands, which is what we did. And then we have recorded flow that, that we can use with our historical trends to project to the future, so.
The answer you're giving, I interpret to mean that based on this X plus Y minus X times, now you're saying .30, equals your mythical number of people. And that number you're projecting to grow at a rate that will exceed the million gallons per day of our current capacity. So therefore, mathematically, you've given the argument that options one, two, or three are the best options to take. And that's where I was going, and I think we're all at the train station. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think to bring this to conclusion, what I think I am hearing is a consensus for 2.5, hybrid 2.5, to do the design for the 3.47 and currently doing the repairs of option five. I don't know if there's a motion to that effect or not.
I make the motion.
There a second? On the question?
Could you just repeat the question for everybody one more time?
To do the design of option two, the engineer, the full engineering for option two, which is the plant of 3.47 MGD for the North Plant, however, to combine that with the repairs of option five at this time.
Does your motion have any timeframe when to begin the upgrade from five to three?
Immediately. Immediately.
Two.
Two, I'm sorry, two. Joe, two.
They would design for two immediately.
And can I ask you, the 7% that they're charging for engineering and for, for engineering design and construction design, like the retail sell of a house with a real estate agent, is that negotiable? Can they bring that down to 5%?
The way I'm interpreting, the construction is only on what they're building at this time, which is five.
But the engineering is still going to go ahead?
Engineering would be Plan Two.
Is that negotiable?
Everything's negotiable.
I think in this world, everything is negotiable, but I'll refer to Mr. Cogan on that.
This is the maximum that's allowed by the state that they will fund for a project of that magnitude. For engineering costs, we normally like to do a detailed evaluation of the scope, do the level of effort, and put together the cost for it. You know, estimate the amount of time it's going to take to do that and submit, you know, proposal with those dollars on it.
You just said, yes, it is negotiable, then.
Negotiable.
Right.
Yes.
Are you, are you willing to negotiate to five?
Not at this time. I don't have that authority. He's not the owner.
He ain't the owner.
Okay. Well, we need someone who has plenty, plenty of potential authority, so-
Yeah.
We'll go back to, the mayor will negotiate that.
Well, the motion, if you approve it, could be cost not to exceed 13 million, which if my math is correct, it's 13,600, combining the two. But I'll defer to the finance department on that. Alderman, please.
As far as engineering, if we go to this engineering, we're talking, I think we're going back up to like 18 months, 16, 18 months, correct?
The engineering-
Almost two years, let's say two years, basically.
For the engineering design of this?
Right. Because this was a little more in detail than whatnot.
Yeah, for two.
I remember you said 16, 18 months, and I said, well, it'd probably take two years.
That if we designed for two, we'd have to look at, well, the NPDS permitting. We can still design for two, but, you know, not modify the permit until the time comes when we need to expand the capacity. So that's out of the phase. So we're still looking at probably a 12 months.
Yeah, yeah, probably the 16.
Yeah, if you tell me 12 months, I'm going to hold you to it.
16.
Yeah, that's what I figured. The, the bottom, you know, I have to concur with the mayor, you know, I'd rather engineer the plant. My question is, I mean, I know we can make the motion, the motion can always be expanded later, and, because we don't know what money's going to be available in two years. Because, like you said, we can put it out for option, you know, you might get these prices, it might be government money, we don't know. Question maybe is for Mary, I mean, if we, if we go with this motion, and the prices, you know, when we put it out for bid, I mean, we can put it out for bid, just reconstruct with no expansion and the thing, we can change at that time, correct?
I'm sorry. It appears as if what you're doing is saying design for the-
For the future.
Right. But if the bids come in too high, you don't have to accept any of the bids. You can always modify. Or you can ask them to bid alternate, alternates, which is what I think they were talking about, so that you can then do, pick and choose what you want at the time of the money.
Because one of the things was on five, they didn't have the UV protection, you know, I mean, we might want to get away from the chlorine right, right from the get-go and go with the UV.